Good evening. It's Monday, January the 7th, 2019. We're in the Governor's Room of the Community Center, and this is the organizational meeting of the St. Peter Board of Education. I'd like to call the meeting to order, and to do so, we would consider and adopt the agenda. The agenda is missing two designated depositories. They are, and are filled in as number four being CCF Bank, number five being U.S. Bank of St. Paul, number six being Wells Fargo Bank, number seven being MSDLAF, which is the depository we use-
Liquid asset.
-for liquid assets. With that note, a motion to approve the agenda would be in order.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. And the motion is, or the agenda is adopted. Would you please join me in standing and proclaim the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So the next order of business in the organizational meeting is the election of the officers. And we start with nominations for the chairperson for 2019.
I nominate Mark Carlsen.
Are there any other nominations?
I must be out of the loop. I nominate Ben Leonard.
Okay. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Seeing none, the... What do I say here? I say that the nominations are closed. Now we get the opportunity to vote, and this is a voice vote.
Could we hear from both of you?
Yeah, can I add some discussion?
Absolutely.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I nominated Mark. I think Mark has done an excellent job as school board chair and appreciate his leadership. I think being chair in the future is something that I would be interested in. It's my intent that Mark be elected to the position and that I don't do anything officially, but that I spend maybe more time talking with Mark and more time going to committees that I am maybe not on, but we always have the option as school board members to attend different committees. So I'm sort of committing myself to spending more time with the school board this year with the hope that I would be reelected to another term and then be considered for a school board chair.
Can I speak to my nomination?
Please.
It was my understanding that there was thought that maybe you weren't planning on running for school board. I have no, I may have misunderstood that and that you would mentor whoever the chair might be through this next year. And so if I got signals crossed or misunderstood what the discussion was, that was my intent of nominating Ben, as I expected that you would... There was even talk of possibly finding a different role, like a... What's that called?
Past president.
Past president or past chair position to mentor Ben in that role going forward. So I... Sounds like Ben would prefer not to, so I don't know if I can withdraw my nomination or we can just vote. So, but that's why I nominated him. It was my understanding that, that.
And thanks, John, I appreciate that.
Sure, if I can also speak.
Yeah.
But first of all, he can, you can withdraw your nomination. But I think you appoint, you basically appointed me to this board, so I owe you a lot. You gave me my committee assignments, you've been supportive all the way through, but I thought this might be the time to use your expertise even to a different level. I think what your legacies may have been, and it appears it's not going to be, but to leave a board chair that's prepared for the demands of the job. None of us, to my knowledge, at least at the school board level, have ever put together a committee list of chairs of committees and members of committees, and well, that goes into that. To my knowledge, none of us have sat down with the superintendent and other administrative team members and put together an agenda that is much more detailed than what we think when we come and sit down. It's all in front of us, and I don't think anybody currently serving on this board has put in the number of hours that a chair puts in, the demands on your time. And so I was, I was gonna make a motion tonight that we create a position of past president so that we could use your expertise, but if it's a wish of the board that you go forward, I'll certainly support that. I just think that the person following, whoever that may be, a year from now, may look back and wish he had that, or she had that guidance that you can give this coming year. So, but Director Carlson, you have the right to withdraw the nomination that wasn't seconded. So, and not that it has to be, but-
It doesn't, it doesn't have to be.
Okay.
It can, it can stand. And thank you all for the, for the kind words, Bob, for your thoughts, and Ben, yours, and John as well. As we talked a little bit at, or as you guys talked at the board study session in December, I will do and fill whatever role that you wish for me. I have served at your wish for however many years, and we have tried to design a program where, as each of us works on our committees, we learn about agenda setting and we work with the superintendent. So we're trying to, you know, make that world go around. And clearly, John, you're right, I have no intention of running for school board in the fall of 2019. This is my last 12 months, and we do hope that any... You know, there's always this, this cultural legacy, right, that we want to make sure we pass to the next generation. But one of the charges that we've had, or that I've had, and worked with all of you and others on in years past is to, is to leader-proof this system, right? To make it so that it's not dependent on an individual person, that we get our committees strong, our committees do their work, that the people appointed to be chairs of those committees move and that they learn the various in-depth components of what it takes to kind of oversee how a school district works. And you've done a great job at that. This next year, if you want me to continue in the chair, I will gladly do that. If you want to transition it to Ben or to any other member, I'm gladly going to support that. There is a situation where we really don't have, you really don't have a seven-horse-hitch, right? And, and so there's, there's a relationship with the superintendent that the chair has that is a little different than individual board members. And only in that it is maybe one of a five-minute more conversation or an earlier notice, first phone call might go someplace. But, you know, that's about it. So it, it's really at your, at your, at your call. And, and it's been a delight, and if you, you want to move with different leadership this year, that's fine with me. If you want me to continue, I think that the plan and the, and the will would be that we have a very engaged board for the next year as we, we move into new people sitting in these chairs next year. So, because I think there's four of us up for reelection. And so there's going to be some new seats, new people in seats next year.
I, I just want to make sure that I'm clear, because I think Bob did a good job of that. But I, you, you have been a marvelous chair. I think, we don't realize how lucky we have it when you read about other school boards, and we've been blessed with a, two great superintendents of my time on the board and a great administrative, administration team and an out-of-this-world chair. And so I just thought there had been some talk at the study session of possibly creating a position where you'd mentor someone. And interestingly, the person that I nominated nominated you. So I think that speaks volumes to how he sees this going forward. But that was my only intent. I really think, I want to make sure it's, that it's very, very clear that I'm very pleased and honored to have you as the chair of this board.
Yeah. Why are you appointing me?
No, I just, up to this point, and then after the vote, maybe.
We have two names for nomination.
I thought he withdrew.
Oh, did you?
I'm gonna withdraw my nomination.
Okay, all right, very well. I have the authority apparently to be able to declare by acclamation that I'm gonna serve as the chair for 2019. And thank you for that. It's a humbling thing to hear nice words when you don't have to say them. And I appreciate that very much. And we do have an exciting year ahead of us. At that end, we should continue with this bit, because we got another meeting afterwards. But thank you so much for your support, I'm deeply honored by it. The next thing we have to do is nominate the vice chair. Nominations for vice chair.
I nominate Ben Leonard.
Are there any other nominations for vice chair? Are there any other nominations for vice chair? I'm following the rulebook, that's why I ask three times. For those of you who are new to this. Are there any other nominations? Pardon me?
I asked my wife three times.
Are there any other nominations for vice chair? Seeing none, I... The nominations for chair or vice chair are closed. And I hereby declare that, since we only have one nomination, that by acclamation, we are electing Ben Leonard to be the vice chairperson for 2019. Nominations for clerk.
I nominate Drew Dixon.
Nominations for clerk. Nominations for clerk. Nominations for clerk are now closed. Since we have one nominee, I hereby declare by acclamation that Mr. Dixon will be the clerk for 2019.
Thank you.
Nominations for the treasurer.
I nominate John Carlson.
Nominations for treasurer.
Thank you.
And nominations for treasurer. The nominations for treasurer are now closed. We have one individual nominated for the treasurer. I hereby declare by acclamation that John Carlson will be the acting treasurer for 2019. And the election of officers is now over. We'll move on to the next agenda item, which is the designation of depositories.
Mr. Chair, I move the seven institutions that you listed in setting up the agenda for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and those are the First National Bank of St. Peter, the Nicola County Bank of St. Peter, Boamtown Bank of St. Peter, the CCF Bank, the U.S. Bank of St. Paul, Wells Fargo Bank, and the MSDLAF in the Twin Cities. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. And the motion carried. Next item we have is to designate the official newspaper. It is currently the St. Peter Herald. This requires a motion.
I move to designate the official newspaper as the St. Peter Herald.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. And the motion carries. The Herald is the official newspaper. To designate the auditor for the school district. We currently use Abdo Aiken Meyer.
Chair, I move Abdo Aiken Meyer be the designated auditor for the school district audit.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. And they are designated the auditors. The next item is we designate the business manager or his designated to continue to make wire transfers for the school district. This requires a motion.
I move that we designate the business manager or his designated to continue to make wire transfers for the school district.
Second.
And a second, thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. And that is approved. The next item, we designate the superintendent to approve non-resident student agreements. This requires a motion as well.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there discussion or clarification? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. And the motion carries. The next item is to set the board salaries for the year.
Mr. Chair, I'd set, move, make a motion to set the board salaries as described in the agenda.
Second.
And we have a second. They remain unchanged, for those who wish to know. Any other further discussion or clarification? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye, no, five by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. You don't get a raise. The last item we have, or on this page anyway, is to set the daytime and place for our regular board meetings and study sessions. This requires a motion. We have been meeting. The recommendation is to set regular board meetings for the third Monday of the month at 6:30 PM in the Governor's Room in the Community Center. We set our study sessions for the first Monday of the month at 6:30 PM in the Middle School Media Center. And we set the third meeting, the January meeting, for the first Monday of the month as per MSBA and state statute. And the February meeting for the third Thursday of the month due to conflict with holidays.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second to set our dates and times as so stated. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. And the motion carries, and those dates are set. The next thing we do is the appointments to the following committees, and we have now 23 committees. Those committees, as per our habit, will be set by the end of the month. We like to discuss them at the MSBA, and we will have some significant change, I'm sure, in several of those as we move forward. And I don't believe that we have any meetings of committees set between now and our MSBA conference. Other than Minnesota Valley.
That is correct, a week from tomorrow.
A week from tomorrow, and I happen to be the representative on that, and I'll go to that. Which brings us to our favorite agenda item, number eight.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. With the organizational meeting, anybody need a break? All right. We're ready. I'd like to call to order the regular board meeting of the St. Peter Board of Education. It's Monday, January 7th, and it's about 6:55 PM. We are in the Governor's Room. Could we consider and adopt the agenda? That is before us.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. And the agenda is adopted. Any member of the audience who wishes to speak to a particular agenda item that we have for tonight? There are cards in the back, and if you fill one out and get it to Becky at the end there, when we get to that agenda item, we would allot you time and opportunity to speak to that item. Next we have is our consent agenda, and it's a brief one tonight. And as per our habit, we'll read the consent agenda into the minutes, and then if there are any individual items, we'll deal with those separately. Otherwise, a motion to approve would be in order. Tonight on the consent agenda, we are approving the regular board meeting minutes of December 17th, 2018. We are approving bills of $1,625,039.32, and the wire transfers for 2018 are not ready at this time due to the unavailability of bank statements.
Correct.
Thank you, Treasurer Carlson. We have a few personnel items, and by that I mean a few. This is wonderful, Becky. We could only have just five every month, that'd be just great. We are approving the hiring of a 6.75-hour-per-day special education paraprofessional at North Elementary School effective January 2nd, 2019. This is a replacement position. We are approving the hiring of a 6.5-hour-per-day English-language paraprofessional at North Elementary School effective January 2nd, 2019. This is a new position. We are accepting the retirement of a paraprofessional at St. Peter Middle School effective January 18th, 2019. We are accepting the resignation of the physical plant coordinator for St. Peter Public Schools effective December 18th, 2018. We are approving the hiring of a physical plant coordinator for St. Peter Public Schools effective January 7th, 2019. This is a replacement position. And we are approving the hiring of a full-time principals secretary at St. Peter Middle School effective January the 10th, 2019. This is a replacement position. And that is the consent agenda. A motion to approve would be-
I make motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion or clarification? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries, and the consent agenda is completed. Ms. Singeling.
We have students back in school.
We do have students back to school, and I've got, I've got two students, two seniors here tonight, and their teacher, Ms. Pagacznik. You've probably heard me talk about Ms. Pagacznik often when I'm sitting here giving building updates. I want to thank these three for their last-minute invitation. They were invited last Friday afternoon, and they were very willing, right? To come and talk to the board. They, it was actually perfect timing, because I had just attended, I had just attended a dinner at 10:30 AM hosted by the Blue Ox Restaurant. I sent all of you some pictures at the beginning of the meeting tonight. You're probably wondering why your phones were, were buzzing away. So because their invitation was Friday afternoon, and, and this is tonight, they're just going to talk through what this really innovative project-based learning activity that they've been working on, really probably all semester, in advanced culinary arts. So Lily Elifson and Lauren Mayer are in their second year in culinary arts program. They were in culinary arts, intro to culinary arts last year, and as a really popular class, they decided to continue and take year two of the program. So let them talk about the project from beginning to end, or whatever part you want to cover.
Okay, so basically, Ms. P wanted us to create a real restaurant in our school. And so it started a couple months ago where we had some guest speakers come in, and Lauren's dad was one of them. And they just talked to us, and we took notes about it. And then we had to do interviews, like we each wrote a job application, and so then we had to go around the class, kind of like speed dating. And we all interviewed for different spots in different kitchens. And then as a group, we like chose people and hired them to work in our kitchen.
And so we, we hired people to work in our kitchen based on how their interview went and everything, and then Ms. P interviewed us for our own kitchens, for our front-of-house manager, back-of-house manager, and pastry chef, and expediter, and all those fun things that go into a restaurant. And just last week, we were the first kitchen to go. It was me, Lily, and Kenzie Brey. And we pretty much, for the past couple months, have been researching every aspect of a restaurant everywhere, from how a restaurant should look and flow to how to, what to charge on your menu, what goes into what, what a menu should look like, what a prefix menu is. And like Lily said, with my dad coming in to speak, we had three speakers of, you know, owning businesses and what really goes into it, and, you know, it's not all easy. And so, what else?
We created our own menu, and in our menu, we had like burgers, fries, fried pickles, but we all, we had a twist on everything, so it wasn't just typical bar food. So we added our own spices.
Gourmet burgers, not a regular burger.
And Lauren invited her dad to the restaurant, and I invited my dad. And we just sat them down and had waitresses wait on them. It went really well.
All within one block, so 90 minutes. We did a restaurant in 90 minutes. And it was, it turned out really well. And there's three more kitchens that are still, still have to go yet. And so Lily and I and every other student have different roles in each kitchen, so you can really work at getting in each job. And that's kind of what we did last year in Intro to Culinary Arts. That's kind of how we started off cooking. Everyone had a different role in each kitchen to make sure everyone, you know, so you're not stuck being the dishwasher in every single kitchen. So you get to do something different in every kitchen to really see what it's like to do everything.
I don't know what else to say. They kind of covered it all, but the, the goal really was to have them have every hand possible. And so they designed their own menu, they chose all of their own recipes. They had training days where they had to train their staff. They had their own practice days, so they got to see, okay, well, this amount of brown sugar isn't right, or this kind of cheese is what we need in our cheesy fried pickles. And this is the kind of ranch dressing we need, and that Caesar dressing is disgusting, Ms. P, do not buy that for us again. And had to figure it all out. So it really came together great. Designed their own menu, we printed them, we did restaurant comment cards. It was a whole theme. Yeah. We turned a conference room in the, in the school into, you'd have no idea.
It was a conference room, so.
Yeah, that was one of the windowed, small group rooms at the end of the faculty offices that was the dining room. We'd never, never recognize. It was really fun. Very cool, very travelable.
I have a quick question.
Yeah.
The culinary kitchen, does it include what you need?
Oh, yeah.
If we do it right, is it?
You did pretty well. We could, honestly, we could have more space.
Well, take the gym.
Yeah, we could have a little more space.
And add Deway at the gym.
Otherwise, no, it's very, it's great.
Great.
And how, how does one make a reservation at one of these exclusive, exclusive kitchens?
People have been asking us. You had to be at the top of the list.
Other staff were upset, like, why not?
John? Are you both seniors?
Yeah.
How's the college search going?
Mine's going very well. I've picked Gustavus Adolphus.
Really? Do you play sport?
Yeah, I play tennis, actually.
Mine is going well. I actually just got accepted into Winona State University today.
Congrats.
I haven't really told anyone, so. But I'm, I'm not committed there or anything, it's just the start.
Good, congrats.
Thank you.
Good to see you, Amanda. Well done.
Thank you.
Oh, the student council report. Ms. Lee, it's a new year.
Yeah, I don't have too much to say. Basically just updates on what I talked about last time. Oh, yeah, and actually I'm going to pass around these pictures of the pods that we decorated while I talk. So, yeah, for starters, we sold the candy grams. They weren't quite as good as the turkey grams, but we still sold a lot. They were hit. And then we got all of our clothes wrapped up for the drive. We had a lot. We didn't get any real numbers on these things. That's kind of why I brought the pictures, because the pods were awesome this year. We like set aside about two weeks to decorate and everybody just went all out. Like from last year to this year, it was just an amazing increase in like participation. And, yeah, it was so much fun. The sophomores won. They were the grinch, so they got the movie prize. It was, the teacher said it was so hard to pick because they were all just awesome, but, yeah, that was the biggest update. It was all really fun. And now on Wednesday, we have our meeting for snow week. So we're going to start getting into that and planning the dress up days and all the activities that go into there. So that's pretty much all I have.
Where are you getting the snow?
We're going to have to look into that, I guess. I'd have to set some of our budget aside for that fake fluffy stuff.
Well, things can change quickly, as you know, so.
Yeah.
We might have some snow by then. Thank you. We are? Supposed to snow tonight?
No, it's crazy. Like there were hundreds of paper chains up there and.
That's amazing.
Like lights and it was just awesome. Like everyone was so sad to take it down. Janitors didn't want it up the whole time. It was like a fire hazard and everything. Some was falling, but. And the kids were like, no, like we want to leave it up. When are we decorating again?
Well, that sounds like an excuse to decorate, whether it's snow week or.
Yeah, we might have to do it again for something else. I don't know, Valentine's Day, we could get some love spreading all over the school.
No quidditch, though. We're not doing that. Action items tonight. We have one thing which we do annually in the January meeting. And it's a resolution to start the two thousand nineteen, twenty budget planning process. And this just officially hands the baton over to Dr. Peterson and the administration to start looking. We've got work that needs to be done within the committees to set some parameters for them to work with. But this, this resolution is to get them officially going forward and start on the process. So it does require a motion.
I move the resolution.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. It is a resolution. Are there clarifications or discussion, anything to add here? Well, I'm going to start with the lady on my left.
Aye.
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 It's unanimous. The resolution is approved. Go, go, go. Dr. Peterson. Brief agenda for action. Tonight, we're done with that one already, too. So now it's on to information items. Something else that handles, two things we do every year in January is our yearly enrollment comparison report. And, and the next thing we're going to talk about is our fund balance tracker, which we also do. But Dr. Peterson, let's.
Yes, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Included in your board packet is the annual comparison report that is generated by the district office that provides some context and some detail to students' enrollment options. And so what we know in Minnesota is that as Minnesota being a choice state, students who live in the Saint Peter Public School District can choose and opt into our public system. But what we also know is that they have a range of options around. And so what we have traditionally done is prepared a report to show where those numbers are. You'll see that it's a three-page packet in the board book. I would point your attention to pages two and three because that's really where you can see more of the breakdown of, for students who are leaving Saint Peter Public Schools and opting into a different learning environment. You see the breakdown of grade level and the destination of where they are receiving their schooling. And then on the third page, it is where we are attracting students and by, and in which grade level. And so some interesting data. You'll note that there is a lot of choices for students within Saint, not only within Saint Peter, but the online world and then neighboring school districts. And so this is information that we use as an administrative team and, of course, the school board uses as we share information about the comprehensive program that we have and think of different ways to either attract students or make sure that students and families understand all of the different opportunities that are involved in a Saint Peter education. There is some information on the first page that is just transferred from the private and parochial and homeschool report that you receive in the late fall. And so you'll see those numbers at the bottom of that first page. But like I said, the newest information for you is on pages two and three.
Questions or comments for Dr. Peterson?
A comment, Mr. Chair. I was surprised, I guess, to see that there's about a hundred more students leaving than coming. I was always under the impression, not in any way he told me, I just felt that it was different. And I'm kind of surprised where, where a number of our students are moving to.
It's thirty-two, right? Thirty-two more leaving than.
Well, I've got a total of leaving Saint Peter, two hundred and thirty-three, and total coming to Saint Peter of a hundred and thirty. Now, maybe I misread your numbers, but.
I think if you, if you, I think Bob, what Bob is reflecting is, or what, what he's noting is the, if you add in the public school, the public school, plus the charter, plus the online, all of those different options, then, then that is a gap.
And if you start thinking about money, you know, we're talking well over half a million dollars there. That we certainly could use within the system to provide an even better education opportunity. So I, I would hope that the board and staff will take another look at this and just try to figure out what may be some of the reasons. I know there was a survey at one time. If anything, we need to do. It may be, all of these are logical. Maybe they're following parents to work or siblings or, or any number of reasons. But I do think we have an excellent program here. I think we have opportunities that students in other school districts can't come close to getting. I think our academic standards are high, which means that the students have to work. And when they come out of this school district, they're college-ready, career-ready to a vast degree. So it may be that we're doing exactly what we have to do, but it always, never hurts to look.
Great. I, just a couple of other numbers for those who can't see them in the audience. Our current enrollment is twenty-two hundred and thirty-one. And we have had a consistent rise in enrollment since two thousand nine, two thousand and ten school year. Enrollment is higher each year ever since two thousand nine, two thousand and ten. But you're right, there are a lot of options. For, for those people who think that there's no competition in public education, you come get a copy of the chart because there is. And I do think that, you know, we have led the way with four-year requirements in science, math and English where other districts do not, a state doesn't require that. We have a pretty high number of credits to graduate and others don't. In fact, we did a study a few years ago, collaborative study. I got to say this quick before Nancy gets in here. The only thing, the only thing is same about high school in the state of Minnesota is the name on the outside, high school. That's it. When you really dig into it and you start looking at one district to another, there's, it's really not the same. And, and the offerings aren't equal. So it, it does make a difference and sometimes it shows up on these charts, on these charts. And.
And I, and I do think that it is something that as an administrative team, we're, we're interested in, we're looking at, examining different ways to generate better data as to some rationale. But I also think the point of as the district has grown, the, the percentage of students opting for open enrollment options has stayed very flat. So that's, that is noted as well.
John?
Yeah. Going back, I think we did do a survey or is that a yearly survey or just it was a one-time thing?
We, we have done it twice since, within the last four years. I think information like this would probably spark us to looking at those results again and also maybe asking some different questions.
Yeah, because I would be interested to see the data on that. And maybe it is something that is considered something that we do as a district every other year even. I mean, I, I would imagine parent, parent involvement would drop if we asked the same question every year. I told you last year it was this and it still is, you know, I work in Mankato or whatever it might be. But I think, I, I would love to have a better understanding of why this is happening. Not saying it's a bad thing necessarily. I don't know. But it's because we have, I haven't seen what we've asked and what the response rate was.
Right.
In different categories.
The largest spike that we, that we see in these numbers from last year is in public, traditional public schools now offering online programming that is available to anybody within the state. And so as, obviously in, in that second chart, you can see that students right out of the, right there. New programs.
Some of that comparative work that we did, John, was back when we first did the shared programs and services group when we were trying to collaborate a number of years ago with maybe purchasing districts coming together and finding ways to, to do stuff. And I think, Bob, you might have still been at the MSBA when we did some of that and, and worked with. I mean, we had the big room up there and we had, we had fifteen districts in there. And there was some, everybody had filled out kind of what you offer and what you have and how many people you got here, there and yonder. And, but that type of thing I think needs to be continually relooked at. And you're exactly right. We need to keep our.
Yeah, because I'm still not sure if I should be even concerned about it. Because as you said, the percentage really hasn't changed. And so, but I, if someone asks me about it, I, you know, are you concerned about it? Actually, I don't have enough information to know if I should be, you know, if that makes sense.
If we could get them all home, it's a lot of money.
It'd be a lot of money. And maybe, like I said, there may be many reasons why they're leaving and, and some of those we may not even want to address.
Right.
Depending on what the issue is.
Correct.
All right. Well, the next item we have tonight, again, information, is the fund balance tracker. Something we instituted a number of years ago to get an update every few months about the things, the actions we take here at the board during our regular meetings where we usually approve something. And then sometimes we don't always realize that, oh, yeah, we spent money when we did that. That wasn't maybe in the, in the budget or is different than, than what we expected. So this gives us a chance to kind of see where we are according to where our budget was and what authorizations we've, we've made that, you know, where we're at. So, Dr. Peterson?
Yes, Mr. Chair, members of the board. There are five items identified in this report of the fund balance tracker. As you know, this happens twice a year where you'll see an update of deviations from the budget. Before the, the institution of the hundred thousand dollars in your budget, which is expected but, or anticipated but unknown, this was really, really important because it was money that was coming directly from the fund balance. Now, as we work through and the, the four-year roll-up being updated within the next few weeks, many of these dollars are accounted for in that line item. But just to very quickly go through, these Alice expenses relates to the enhanced lockdown and the enhanced security measures that have been a part of the school district since last summer. That has required us to get some trainings and additional support for faculty, staff and kids. That has come in at about three thousand dollars. CSP management, that's for Community Spirit Park. You'll remember that we have a maintenance agreement with the city of Saint Peter, signed that last year. That'll be a topic of discussion this coming spring as we look to renew that. The estimated cost of CSP was around thirty-three thousand dollars. That came in a little north of that, so we've identified ten thousand dollars to make sure that, that we're whole on that and, and sticking to that agreement. The third one down there is, is a higher number. High school building and outside expenses, July, August, September, October. Really what that one relates to is that in the last budget go-around, we, we did, we still didn't have full ownership of the outside facility, the outside park and some of the things inside the building. And so the contractors were, Kraus Anderson, we were using bond funds to, and contractors still owned those things before they were turned over. Well, now that we fully own everything, it's not as if we're spending sixty thousand, like above what we thought, but now those things have actually hit the books. And so there's an accounting that needs to occur there. Over the last couple of months, we've hired a couple of ELL care professionals to, to support increasing enrollments in our English language program. And then at the high school, we had some small FTE increases. Really that equates to a couple overload assignments to balance some sections and reduce some sizes in some of our upper-level high school courses. That's a brief rundown.
Mr. Chair, there's, there's another way to look at this. We, the board did put a hundred thousand into the budget. And we have a multimillion dollar budget. And we came within eight thousand dollars of that. I mean, that's amazing when you stop to think of it. It's, it's, eight thousand dollars is a lot of money, but in a budget that we have, it's minimal. And to think that the budget was that close on all of the issues and including the hundred thousand dollars set aside, and I expect there'll be that same thing the coming year. We'll put another hundred or so aside for unexpected. But to only be eight thousand dollars off is amazing.
We know that within, and the board has talked about a few of these items, we know that in the, in the coming months, there could be additional variations. One area that came up again today at our admin team meeting was cybersecurity. Some things that we're going to have to shore up with our relationship with them, but, but that will be reflected in the next tracker.
Kind of questions or comments for the superintendent? All right, that gets us through our information items tonight. On to reports, we have our principals. Then the superintendent and the individual board members after that.
Well, good evening. Here we are back from winter break already and early childhood is ready to go. Transitions were actually really quite smooth coming back after that break, so we were happy to see that. Next week, January seventeenth, we're holding our next early childhood screening. As I've mentioned here before, early childhood screening is required before kindergarten entrance. It is required by law. So we have one now in January and then we'll have one in March, hoping to get all of those children who will be going into kindergarten screened as well as others. And the goal of early childhood screening is to ensure we're catching any developmental delays, speech needs, et cetera, early so we can provide some early intervention. Early release is this Friday. Our staff will continue working on identifying the essential indicators of progress for early childhood. Our literacy focus continues. indicators of progress for early childhood. Our literacy focus continues, and we're working to align our learning targets with those in kindergarten. So we're working on that. And then, February twenty-third, we'll be holding our school readiness open house, planning for nineteen-twenty already. Families can come, take a look at our center, get some information, and register for classes if it's the right time for them. So we're excited about that.
All right. It seems like we were just here, nine days ago. As a matter of fact, nine school days. Boy, we're getting a lot done since then. The, we came back last, last week, and as ETV said, we pretty much just settled right back in. It was fun to see their faces. It seemed like we'd been gone for a while. But this week, now, we already started our FAST assessments, so we started that today. So each class, that takes approximately fifteen minutes for them to do a, a reading assessment, and then a math assessment will follow up. It takes about two weeks for us to get through the reading piece, and then we'll go on to the math. And we use that information then to determine what, what kinds of instruction we need to provide for them. We also will be starting access testing for our ELL students, and that will begin as well in January. The end of our quarter will be approaching next Friday already, so we won't have any school that following Monday for, as a teacher workday. And I would also like to thank Riverside Hospital for a very generous donation to the Children's Weekend Food Program, which Darren and I were able to receive at the food shelf in December. And we will also be present at Redmond Bingle on the eighteenth, nineteenth, if anyone would like to come and support the Children's Weekend Food Program. So there'll be a whole host of elementary staff.
Which is cards from me?
Yes. And treats from me. And I would just like to remind everyone that the kindergarten registration information is now on our website. So we are starting to make plans for next year, and we would love to get registrations in as soon as possible, and we will have a formal registration night in March as well.
Happy New Year. From North Elementary School, we have a bunch, handful of new items going that I'd love to share with you. One is JA in a day. We've never done junior achievement at North before, and fourth grade's getting it kicked off this Friday at the early release day. So, yeah, they're excited. So, each of the early release days for the next three months, each grade level, second, third, and fourth grade, it's going to be junior achievement. And we have a number of volunteers coming in. Definitely want to thank Mandy Quist, our career and college coordinator, who, this is definitely something that she got rolling right away this summer, in finding local business partners, volunteer to come in and speak to all of our grade levels. So, we're really excited. Like I said, it's the first go-around, but when you look at that whole program, kindergarten all the way through, the curriculum that goes with it, and getting community, community members in the classroom, just talk about community, local stuff, state stuff, family things, it's going to be exciting. So I'm definitely looking forward to that. Also, I know I pitched this last time, but I'd like to do it again. It's definitely one of my favorite nights of the school year. It's arts and academic night, coming up in February on the twelfth. And this is, this is for all of our grade levels, but there is a serious component to it as well. Third and fourth grade, they start to get their first taste of some competition with science, the science fair. So those individual students have been registering right and left, but then there's also kind of a non-competitive piece to that. And it's students that are, they sign up for performances, they play the piano, they put their artwork on display. And we want to definitely thank Ms. Steele and Ms. Malls for coordinating that. It's my favorite night of the year, just the talent that those kids bring on that night is phenomenal. And there's not a huge, you know, a practice structure to it. They have, they have to bring their A-game on their own. And they get super nervous, and they practice it done. But just the, just the energy that night is phenomenal. Also, a first this year, we have a math, an after-school math program called Crazy Eights that Mr. Lenhoff is getting rolling. When North, used to be North Intermediate School, we used to have Continental Math, and then Math Masters. And we've been searching, last year, we spent the year kind of searching for a good program for enrichment opportunities after school. So, there's a program called Crazy Eights that Mr. Lenhoff is going to lead. It's, it's, it's a pretty cool program that it invites a number of kids to apply, and they can be from any interest level and ability level with math. In fact, he's looking for a mixture of our greatest math thinkers to the kids that aren't sure about math. And it's designed to partner them together with just tons of hands-on activities that then go along and align that to values and solutions and problem-solving. So that's going to start this Thursday and go through eight sessions every Thursday for the next eight weeks. So that's called Crazy Eights. And then, last, we have MSU theater students coming in here on January twenty-fourth to present a, about a forty-five-minute show to all the North students. And Mr. Lenhoff, again, is coordinating that. He puts together a spring play for second, third, and fourth graders, and he kind of uses that as a springboard to get the students interested in performing arts. And then, so the MSU students come in, perform, and then he starts to have tryouts some weeks after that. And then, there's a performance in April, later on in April, that I'll let you know. And we'll, we'll get the tickets online, the sales for that. If we can leverage that system, I don't know. I should probably ask before I say we're going to do that.
Go ahead.
It's my system, right?
It's your system.
Before you give up the microphone, there's a rumor that you're in the polar plunge again. And then, you've got the superintendent, the principals, the HR director, and the business manager.
Yeah, yeah. You're, you're exactly right, Mr. Meeks. Yep.
And the board.
In the board, in the board chair.
Are you doing, are you doing the polar plunge?
We are, yep. We're doing it again. It happens to be, it's my daughter, my youngest daughter's birthday that day, and that she kind of wants to make that a part of her birth, birthday festivities. So, the Doherty family will be plunging again, and I invite anybody that would like to join the crew. You, I'll, I'll have you sign a, or you can donate.
I'll donate.
I'd rather you join. It's much more memorable.
Thank you, Mr. Meeks.
All right. It is Spirit Week at St. Peter Middle School, sponsored by our Student Council. We've got dress-up days all week, and then culminates with a dance on Saturday. Fifth and sixth grade will have their dance at six o'clock, and then the seventh and eighth grade at eight o'clock. Feel free to come cut a rug. St. Peter School District will be participating in the Minnesota Student Survey on January eleventh. Minnesota Student Survey is a survey given out by various state agencies every three years to grades five, eight, nine, and eleven. And we're participating this year on the eleventh. It's optional, it's anonymous. But that information gives those state agencies and districts a lot of information about student experiences and kind of their, their personal lives. And then lastly, we will begin our FAST assessments next week. And once again, that data is used to determine if we're on course, or are we headed in the right direction with our math and our reading progress.
Why don't we have those back?
The results are immediate. We're able to, as soon as the whole class is done, we're able to look at the data.
February.
Last Friday, I had the pleasure of, of working with Cory Odland, our new Shared Workforce Development Coordinator. It is a shared position between TCU, La Sure, and St. Peter Schools. We were, I was, we were the third building that she had been to in the, in the week, and so we had a really great conversation about how that position will look as a, as a shared regional position between the three districts. So we're really looking forward to working with, with Ms. Odland.
What's it supposed to do in that?
The Workforce Development Coordinator position is new, and also, it's grant-funded for at least two years through United Way. And South Central Service Cooperative is actually, has actually, they organize the interviews, and are, she's actually an employee, considered an employee of the service co-op. What we envision her position to be right now is a lot of pounding the pavement and working with, getting out there and meeting with businesses and manufacturers, colleges, anybody, anybody that, that we can partner with in any of the three schools. Anywhere from perhaps potential internships to what we can offer them as far as training facilities. I've just, it's really, the sky would be the limit about what sort of partnerships we could have with, with various, various community businesses and manufacturers.
So, those entrepreneurs or businesses in our community that have an interest in an internship, or a mentoring program, or an apprenticeship, or some sort of dialogue, they would contact who?
Well, they can always contact me at the high school, but Cory Odland would be the person, that would be the contact person to hopefully develop that, that relationship.
And her information would be on our website someplace?
Yes. Yep. And through the service cooperative as well.
Okay.
Yeah, we're excited about that. And lastly, I know I, I reported on our Know the Truth Night a lot during the buildup to it, but as a follow-up, there's a, the, the same team of people who put that evening together is still interested in continuing that conversation along with some parents who were there that night, who know that one night of presenting isn't, isn't going to solve the problem. So that, that's, that small, rather small group is going to continue talking about it, but we, we would like to, on Opportunity Day, after the juniors and the sophomores are done with their pre-ACT and ACT test, the ninth graders and the seniors are out of the building doing other, doing other college and career search-type activities. They usually finish those tests around one-thirty. They're not done with their school day by then, and so we will be screening a, a movie called Screenagers about the effects of, of screen time and technology on teenagers' lives. We are also going to be showing that the following Monday, I believe it's the twenty-fifth, did I have that date right? The twenty-fifth Monday night in February, open to the public. And, and we also hope that this, the Know the Truth group will also have something going on that night to provide education for our families.
Questions for anyone, or comments? The long slog begins.
It's going to be great.
It's a long time in January until there's actually an official break or time off, which is why we make fun of it, because it's a long time. That ends our, our information, or, Dr. Peterson?
Yes, yes. Just, just one item to report on tonight, and that is, of course, next week, the board will be attending. I think everyone is, is able to attend this year, the MSBA Winter Conference. The accommodations are set. There's a small little itinerary on, on your table. If you have any questions or, or concerns or things that we can help with, DL, please let us know. I look forward to our time together. The agenda put forth by MSBA looks very, very detailed. Looks like there's going to be a lot of great sessions, and hopefully we can divide and conquer and, and learn a whole lot. There's always time for a great conversation amongst the board on a whole lot of things that, you know, we'll be facing the district. And it's, so it's fun to, to listen to colleagues and, and hear how other districts are tackling some similar issues, and things that we haven't been thinking about that we bring back and, and can, can think about in, in our future. So, looking forward to that. And if there's any, like I said, anything that we can help with prior to a meeting up in the Twin Cities next Wednesday, please let, let us know.
Carpooling, of course, is, works. Now, Bob had said that you had already put dibs on at least one of these sessions. Which one was that again?
Fishing league.
The fishing league, the fishing league, he's...
That's good.
Noted.
We talked about it.
Were you trying to make that?
Yeah. Oh, I just, do we have any, are we taking a year off from presentations, or show and tell, or?
We will be participating. No, we do have a presentation.
Okay. I was curious.
First, first afternoon, we'll be talking about the Equity Dashboard that MSBA and St. Peter Schools are putting together to kind of show how other school districts might be able to collect information about different demographics to help them make decisions through their strategic planning process.
Cool.
Yep. Three forty-five on Thursday.
Have we heard anything further about a visit, potential visit, from Tim Walls?
It's still a potential.
Potential.
Is he, is he doing something? Is he?
Oh, I mean, our, our main, our main presentation is, and what is this thing called here? Trust? Yeah. So, maybe the entire State House should come over and get in on that one.
Be careful what you ask for.
Very true. Board members, true? Anything?
No, thank you.
Nope.
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 Ms. Lee?
Yep.
All right. We have upcoming meetings of the board. As Dr. Peterson was alluding, the MSBA Winter Convention is January sixteenth through the eighteenth at the Minneapolis Convention Center. And we, along with about three hundred other boards, will be there. And it is a very detailed and great conference. We have a special board meeting that is scheduled for Tuesday, January twenty-second, in the Media Center at six-thirty PM. We have a board study session scheduled for Monday, January the fourth, at the Middle School Media Center. And then, our regular board meeting is Thursday, February twenty-first. And that's what we have on the calendar for now. So, with that, motion to adjourn would be in order.
I so move.
Second. We are adjourned. Thank you.
Does anybody know what the score is?
It hasn't started yet, has it?
It started at seven, I thought.
Really?